This time, we would like to take a moment of silence. It's customary in our city council meetings that we do this. As we do this, we would like to remember those who are serving in our military, protecting this great nation that we live in, the many freedoms that we enjoy each and every day of our lives. We'd also ask you to remember our first responders, our firefighters, our police officers, and those who serve on our behalf and for their service. We would also ask during the moment of silence if you would remember our city council this evening as they make decisions and choices and things that they might do in the best interest of those who reside in our community and also those who come here for other purposes. We'll now take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Move on next to our public comment period. This public comment period is an opportunity for you to come forward to the microphone and address the city council with any suggestions or ideas or concerns that you might have. We would ask you when you come forward to state your name and please limit, if you would, limit your presentation about three minutes. The time is yours for public comment. Seeing none, we will move on to presentations and reports. Mayor's report, I only have one thing to mention this evening. That is, this Saturday, our new Lazy Boy Home Furnishing Store will be opening here in Riverdale. Ribbon cutting set for 12:30 PM. I know they've got a lot of prizes and different things, refreshments and giveaways. It is down, if you know where the new Florin Decor Store is, it's in that same area. It's next to the At Home Home Decor Superstore. It's right there by Wendy's, Sweet Little Brito, and some of those places. I think Starbucks there on the corner. That's probably, a lot of people know where that's at, so... But you're invited to that, just to let you know about that. We're excited to have that business in our city. Move on next to item three. Item two was moved forward to our next meeting. Item three, city administration report. Turn the time to City Administrator, Mr. Worthing.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, real quick, in your pocket this evening is our monthly report for last month of February. Typically, I like to point out one or two items in that report. I'm gonna... Maybe I should pick on the fire department tonight, but I won't. But I just wanted to point out, make mention of Steve Brooks here to my right, our city attorney, and for the legal work that he does for the city and the things that he does, whether it's a resolution, a new ordinance, which we're considering some amendments to on tonight, his records requests, just the work that he does, not only for the staff but for the justice court that we have here. Drug court, he takes care of that and, you know, watches over the clerks that are here in our legal department, so I just wanted to make note of him. He provides to you our monthly report of the court, the total traffic offenses and other cases that the police department works on. So he works closely with our police agency and working with the officers and Chief Brinkman, so I just wanted to make note of Steve Brooks. He's been here a while, too. How many years you got, Steve? Fourteen, so he'll be here on fifteen years here pretty soon, so I just wanted to make note of that. I will get to the anniversaries here in a minute. Our staffing authorization plan, council, is where one FTE under our '05 plan. The community development report, the mayor did mention the Lazy Boy opening here at the end of the week on Saturday. Open for business now. A cycle gear, they moved into the old space over by Lowe's Home Depot in the old Deseret Book Building. Impact Athletics is also here. That's a dance and tumbling class, and they're in one of those units there behind the old store up there on, what is it, 1377 South? About 5175, I think, in that area, 5175 South, I think. The Lazy Boy will be here. As the mayor mentioned, Quick Quack is still under permitting. They have secured their bonding for that project, so they'll begin construction soon. And then Best Realty Shop, which purchased the old Johnny's Dairy, is still ongoing with renovations on that building, slower than we anticipated, but they're moving along. And then, as far as the babies are us building, I don't know if some of you know this, some of you don't. The Dania Furniture Store has announced that it will open a store in that old building there on Riverdale Road, which is just up by the ShopCo, which unfortunately is closing as well eventually, so that's as far as items on the community development report. The other items that we have that we report to you is our finance report. We are benefiting from a strong economy as far as our sales tax revenue collections go. It'll probably be the highest year that we've obviously experienced, but it's good. But again, Riverdale spends what it earns in supporting the number of people that come into our community every day. We have a community that grows forty, fifty, you know, thousand people every day. Cars approaching Riverdale Road are exceeding fifty thousand vehicles a day, and that's a lot of demand on our EMS, our police, and our public work staff, so we earn it, but we spend it as well. That's my report. I'd like to make mention of the fifth year anniversaries and the employees that have their date of hires in this month. Here's Camille here, we're Chief Brinkman. Oh, there she is, she's signed back there. Camille Tesh in our police department has reached fifteen years of service here at Riverdale City, and so we recognize the employees that have five years of service. Every fifth year, we recognize them with a certificate, and Camille is here tonight to receive her fifteen years. I'm on here as five years. Miranda Rizzi, I saw Miranda, there she is, five years of service. Benjamin Williams in our fire department has three years. Tyrell Dalton in our police department has his first year of anniversary working with Riverdale City. And then Thomas Clark in our community services department has one year of service as well, so congratulations to those folks. Let's do Camille and Miranda, if you want to recognize them down here below if you'd like, so...
What about you?
No, I'm fine. I don't need any of that. Camille and Miranda, come on up. I guess we can do both of you, and then Rich and Scott as well.
She is the only one here that can do that, too. Come up, Miranda. I'm gonna ask Rich Taylor, supervisor, he's our community services director. He supervises Miranda, who is the manager of the senior center. Is that the right title? Senior program specialist, okay. A job that she does very, very well, so Rich, do you...
Thanks, Mayor. I've really enjoyed working with Miranda. When I got hired here at Riverdale City, Miranda was already on staff, and she has held a number of different positions with our department, and most recently, she's been over at the senior center. She has an incredible attitude, is always willing to help out. In fact, that's part of the reason why she's over at the senior center right now, is we had a need, and she asked what she could do to help, and she just started filling in. And then when we had a job come open over there, she expressed interest in it. She does a great job at relating with the seniors, providing customer service to them, and providing a lot of great programs for them. We're really lucky to have her, and want to congratulate you on five years of service with the city. That's great.
Thank you.
I would echo that. Miranda, she takes care of all these special things over at the senior center, at the community center, and even with our employees. She manages our wellness program here at the city, whether it's a walk-a-thon that we just finished up here a couple of weeks ago. You know, we've done cornhole tosses, we've done all sorts of things, helps build employee camaraderie and morale and the culture in the staff here at Riverdale City, and she does a lot more than working with the seniors over there, which is extremely important. They love her over there, from what I hear.
She loves them. I know when she was selected for the position, and I know how happy the seniors were that she was brought in to do that, because just about the way she cares and loves the seniors, and they feel that, and they know that she really, truly cares for them, and we appreciate very much what you do, Miranda. And here's your certificate for five years of service. There's also, tell her husband if he's here, that there's a few extra bucks in there for she might take you to dinner or something, so I'll just give you that. Thank you. Happy birthday, late. I know you just had one, so, okay. Thank you for your service. This is Camille Tesh. She's affectionately known in the police department as Millie, and she's a lot of great service. Chief?
Camille's kind of the heartbeat of our department. Customer service-wise, she's excellent. That's the main thing that we ask her to do, and she's always been just top-notch in that area. A lot of times, she's the only contact that some people have with our department, is on the phone or through the lobby, so she does a great job, a lot of responsibilities. She makes it fun and light. I can't believe it's been fifteen years. She's a prankster, I don't know how her husband does it. She's constantly pulling pranks, and she just makes it a fun place to work, so I hope we get her for another fifteen years. I really appreciate everything that she does for the city and her job.
Camille's my person I go to if you need a happy lift. This woman here is just happy all the time. We appreciate her and all she does for the residents of the city and people that aren't from our city that come in, that have concerns or issues that they need to work through with the police, and she does a wonderful job in working with those individuals day in and day out, in sometimes very difficult situations, so I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, Camille, for your service. I go over there occasionally for different reasons. She's always the one that greets me and lets me through the locked doors. She's really good, and as I said, her customer service skills are really superb, and we do appreciate your service. Give you this, certificate for fifteen years of service, and there's also a few bucks for fifteen years of service. You probably can take your whole family, so...
Not just your husband.
Congratulations to you.
Thanks, Camille.
Roger didn't want me to present this, but I'd like to do it. Roger's our city administrator. Some cities refer to him as city managers, but he came to us five years ago. Both of us were new. He had a vast amount of experience, both in public works and as a city planner, and I don't think, there's hardly anything I've ever asked him in the last five years, he didn't have the answer, or else he would be on the computer researching, and I would have an answer very quickly. And he does a lot of things for the city, things, I know even the city council isn't aware of the amount of things that he does and the effort he puts in, but we do appreciate him and appreciate his fine service. We'd just like to congratulate him tonight on five years of superb, outstanding service, so...
Mayor, if there's questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell.
One thing in the fire department report has said that, let's see, sorry, let me find it real quick, heavy rescue went to Weber Fire District or something, is that what I read on there?
So we have the heavy rescue, we saw the heavy rescue, the main heavy rescue.
The white one?
Right, the old coat truck.
Okay.
Went to Weber Fire District to assist us, so we had two different sources and capabilities, and it wasn't just Riverdale providing that service anymore, so we've teamed up with them.
Okay. No, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Move on to item four, presentation and swearing-in, Chief Sholly, fire department personnel.
I should've just stayed up here. I really should've just done that. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a great night for the fire department. Once a year, we do our swearing-in ceremony of our new firefighters from July on, and we're lucky enough to have five of them here tonight. We've got a couple full-time people, and we've got a couple part-timers that we've picked up, so... But what you can see behind us is all the support, and being part of a fire department's not just a job. I've been doing this, been lucky enough to do this now for twenty-six years, and the family, the camaraderie, the things we build, and our jobs are heavy enough, being gone for multiple days. These men and women miss holidays, birthdays, a lot of different things, but because of the support, they're able to do that. And so I didn't want to tread lightly on that. It's a super important aspect of our job, is family, and I appreciate everyone being here to support your firefighters. So I'm gonna bring him up and embarrass him a little bit now. So I'm gonna bring up Garrett Henry, Noah, come on up, just you guys without your families yet, Stephanie, Max, and Shane. You guys can just make a little line right there. Oh no, you get to face this way. Yeah, yep, just line right up. I'll start with Noah. So Noah's new hire in July. We held off hiring three part-time positions until July 1st. So Noah was one of our part-time people. He works full-time at Ogden City Fire Department. He's brought a great deal of knowledge to our department, and he's helped us out tremendously. He's working a ton of hours for us and is really doing a phenomenal job in our part-time ranks. I'm gonna skip Henry and Stephanie for a minute. I'm gonna jump to Shane. Shane is also one of our part-time employees. He's been, he also works at Roy City Fire Department, and he's a full-time paramedic for them up there, and he's been there for two years, correct?
Just under a year.
And he brought his wife Rebecca with him today. Becca, she likes Becca. All right, okay. Shane's also been a very good asset to us, brings the medical skills to our ambulance agency. Max, Max has also been with us since July. He was picked up with us. Max is a very young firefighter, brand-new out of the academy, but guess what? So's Noah, so's Stephanie, so's Shane, so's Max. I've had the opportunity over the years of being part of that fire academy, and it's just incredible when you get a, I say raise, but develop these people and then have an opportunity to hire them, and that's just a phenomenal thing. Max comes to us with a great attitude. One of the things that we found out, coming into, what I found out three years ago coming into this fire department, is we really needed to look at a cultural change, and the best way to make a cultural change is bring good people in with good attitudes, and every person standing up here brings that to our department now, and it's a big aspect of our hiring process. So now I'm gonna pick on Stephanie a little bit. Stephanie's making history. She's our first full-time female firefighter. She went full-time with us, we picked her up in July as well. She tested for our full-time position and came out number one. And Stephanie has a fantastic story. Do you care if I say a little bit of it?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll embarrass her, and I'm gonna tell her one more thing. Stephanie's a beautician, and Stephanie decided in her life that she needed change. Stephanie's sense has lost over a hundred pounds, put herself through the fire academy, and is where she is today, through pure dedication and hard work, so... So now I get to embarrass her again. She's the only person I've ever given a full-time job to who cried so much, I thought she was turning it down, but yeah, as you can see, she's very emotional, she's just a super softening aspect to the fire department that we need so much. I think that's fair, right? Okay. And then we have Garrett Henry. Garrett Henry, we picked him up in September as a full-time firefighter. We kind of recruited him out, I'll back up a little, Garrett showed up to my office one day, and he heard that there's a chance there might be a full-time opening coming in Riverdale, and he showed up just out of nowhere and placed his application and his resume on my desk, and he said, "If there's ever a chance I ever get to work for you, I'd love that opportunity," and really took the initiative. Since then, we've been able to pick him up. He tested out number one for us, gave him, offered him a full-time job. He was at Weber Fire District for over seven years. He was an officer in charge, he was on their heavy rescue team, he oversaw their field training officer position. He's a huge asset that we're gonna, we took from Weber Fire District. They're kind of upset with us. Since then, we had a captain's position open up, and Garrett's very qualified for that position. He tested, once again came out number one, and we're super excited to have Garrett here with us, and his wife Hettie and their kids are here, too. So with that, I want to bring up their family that they've chosen to do their badge pinning. It's really, it's great about this job is your family's involvement, like I said before, and for a family to pin your badge on your chest is, I think, one of the best things we can have them do for us. So with that, whoever's been invited, come on up. Can't be shy. Do you guys want to tell us who's pinning you?
Yeah, this is Michaela. She's my girlfriend. I didn't have an introduction here.
Garrett?
This is my wife, Hettie.
Stephanie?
My kids, Brian and Bailey.
Shane?
And my wife, Rebecca.
And Max.
This is my mom, Chrissy.
Awesome. Go ahead, you can poke them, too. You can put it all the way through the shirt, draw blood, whatever you need to do. Awesome. Okay. Thanks, guys, you have a seat. Oh, actually, no, you get to swear in, they can have a seat. You get to be sworn in now. Should be good to go. All right.
Raise your right arm, and seat after me, please. I, state your name.
I, Garrett Henry.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
Of America's birth
And America's life
And the state of Utah
And the state of Utah
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Both foreign and domestic
Both foreign and domestic
And I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially
Disturb my duties
Disturb my duties
As a firefighter
As a firefighter
Of the Riverdale City Fire Department
Of the Riverdale City Fire Department
Under the appointments
Under the appointments
Of the department
Of the department
According to the laws
According to the laws
Of the state of Utah
Of the state of Utah
To the best of my skills and ability
To the best of my skills and ability.
Yep, you can sit down now. This really is the funnest part of my job, so with that, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Sholly, and I'd like to extend from city council myself, a very special welcome to you new firefighters. We're pleased and proud to have you serving in Riverdale, so hope you enjoy your time here, hope it's a long time, and I think you'll find here we've got a really fine fire department, great group of people, so thank you again. We're gonna move on to our normal business. If you're here for the presentations, you're welcome to leave. If you would like to stay, you're very welcome to do that also.
I'm not the ones to stay, can we leave, too?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Okay, we'll move on next to the consent items. Tonight, we have review of the meeting minutes from March 5th, the city council work session, and also the city council regular session. Do we have any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept these minutes?
We have to approve the, accept the consent items, approve the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous in favor? Move on to the action items. Action item number one, consideration of resolution 2019-05, the inter-local agreement between Riverdale City and Weber County for 2019 and 2021 election services. Mrs. Manning, our city recorder.
So like I said upstairs, this is the inter-local agreement between Weber County and Riverdale City for their election services. The biggest change to this agreement was to have it for two election cycles, so it locks in the price for 2019 and 2021. Upstairs, council member Stevens asked about the definition of active registered voter, so I looked that up, and in 20A, section 1, 102, an active registered voter is a registered voter who has not been classified as an inactive voter by the county clerk. And then I looked up an inactive voter, which is in 20A, 2-306, and it just gives various reasons as to why a county clerk would inactivate a voter registration, which include failure to vote within two general consecutive elections, or if the ballot returns as undeliverable to the county. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mrs. Manning. Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
So there is a little bit of variability in the price, because we don't know, you know, a couple of the things, but just wanted to confirm with you that this is the least expensive way for us to do it.
Yes.
Doing the mail-in and then the combined with the county is the most economical way for us to do that.
Yes, because if we didn't contract with the county, we would have to go to a private vendor, we would have to rent their equipment, we would have to pay for all of the noticing costs, we would have to pay for the poll workers, we would have to pay for the training of the poll workers, we would have to pay for buildings for them to be, to have the elections at, so it's a significant cost savings to the city. And one of the advantages of teaming up with Weber County, like all the other cities do, is we get to participate in cost shares, which reduce our costs. in cost shares, which reduce our costs. So like this year, Weber County has something on the ballot, so it cuts our price in half to team up with them.
Good. Any other questions for Mrs. Manning, Mr. Hanson?
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2019-05, inter-local agreement between Riverdale and Weber County for the next two election cycle services.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Manning, will you pull the council on the resolution, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you. Move on to action item number two, consideration of ordinance 907, amendments and language addition to municipal code 10-13F, hillside and slope protection. Mr. Worthing?
Thank you, Mayor Searle. Council before you tonight is amendments to the code that's indicated there in the resolution 1013F, hillside and slope. Staff has been through and made some additional amendments relative to maintaining the slopes. As you know, over several years and history, people have moved in, and the activities that have occurred throughout the years on those slopes sometimes compose a threat to adjoining property and the safety of individuals. We've added some more criteria in there for slope disturbance, whether you're placing material on the slope, if you desire to do that, and seek out the appropriate manner to do that through a geological study. We have people that discharge limbs and yard waste and dirt and sand over on slopes, or they'll cut into them, or they'll remove vegetation for various reasons. In the past, we haven't had our slope ordinance that, we've called it critical lands in the past. We've changed that a little bit. We now add slopes into it. The verbiage that we've added to, or the language that we've added to this code allow the city staff now to approach individuals with some criteria for their activities on these slopes. The whole goal is obviously to protect property, protect safety, protect the welfare of our community. Staff recommends approval of the code as it's written unless there's changes or adjustments, or if you'd like, you know, further information, we can do that as well.
Mr. Ellis?
I just want to make sure that there was no public comment. We had a public hearing and also sometimes people writing letters. Did anybody express any concern about the change in this ordinance?
Not that I'm aware of, no. The planning commission did hold, not only, they had it on their agenda for discussion and reading, first reading, then they set the hearing, had the hearing, and there was no comment.
I appreciate the fact that you've got some teeth in the ordinance, that people do violate it. There is consequences for their actions. So I appreciate what the staff has done with this ordinance.
I did hear from one interested party from the East bench there, and they seemed to be supportive of the idea, so.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
I appreciate the city taking this and reviewing it. It's unfortunate that we have to kind of learn as we go sometimes. And that's, but that's how we get most of our ordinances, I think, is something happens, and then we, we kind of have to react to it. And we learn as we go. And so I appreciate you doing something about it, and hopefully this will be beneficial to us in the, in the future.
Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Worthing?
Just for the record, I'll just read the purpose, so it's on the record, that this chapter is to protect the public health, safety, general welfare, reduce man-made hazards, protect property and water quality by implementing management practices, criteria and provisions included herein for land use activities, construction and earth disturbance activities, and to achieve the following throughout the city. Furthermore, to establish the required process to determine whether property on or adjacent to certain critical slopes can be maintained or protected and used in a safe, orderly, and beneficial manner. And then it further describes the slope areas and what that means, and how to address them with building requirements.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I say something?
Go ahead.
Just quickly, and this is kind of the rest of the story here. Everything that's in this ordinance, I mean, there's nothing in there that would've changed what happened on the hillside. I just want to make that real clear. This come about because of some things we've seen, because we were up there on the hillside and we saw this firsthand. But, you know, in that particular situation where water was just backing up and building up, no matter what we would've done, we could've never stopped that. But the idea is that we can plan for the future and be a little bit more proactive to prevent things when people are removing vegetation or adding soil and things that could change that. So I just want to make sure that this, this wouldn't have changed that. But, you know, that's an unfortunate situation, and that's just an act of nature. But if there are some things that we can do, that was the intent of, you know, coming from our side. So we had to be really careful in how we wrote this up and everything. It's a real delicate balance there. But certainly, our experience from that led to this eventually, and we started talking about it even clear back then. Even little things like lawn watering and stuff like that was discussed. We didn't put that in, but we may at some point in time up there on that, that slope, just for that reason, to try and help, you know, reduce or prevent additional water backups. But again, I don't know that we could've done anything to stop that realistically.
Mr. Mitchell?
I appreciate you bringing that up, and that wasn't my intent, was what this ordinance would've done anything for that particular. But I think we learned a lot through that experience and about some of the things that do go on, on slopes, and also the effect that, that a slide can have on people above the slide, below the slide, to the sides. It can affect businesses around it. It can affect the water, like Mr. Worthing said. So I think more than anything, it was just kind of a learning experience that, hey, this is something that can be pretty catastrophic. And we did learn that some people were doing things, you know, in other areas up there that, that could have a negative impact in the future. And so I think, I think it's good that we're acting on that, trying to prevent any further slides.
Any other questions or comments? Have a motion, Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, I would move to approve ordinance 907, which is amendments and language addition to the municipal code 10-13F, hillside and slope protection.
Second.
Have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Manning, will you pull the council on this ordinance, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you. Move on to discretionary items for this meeting. Any discretion, Mr. Mitchell?
House and Coleman, sorry, he was talking.
I can understand that.
Deserves every bit of it. You see the way he comments to people on Facebook?
Go ahead.
Call me. Yeah, I was just saying about the house on Coleman, in Coleman Farms.
You okay with that?
What's that? Am I okay with that?
No, but were you gonna say something about that?
No, just, just, we know Jeff's gonna keep an eye on it.
He is. Yeah, Jeff, I asked him specifically on that back, on that home, that meets the requirements, the, is that back?
If you could let us know that, I mean, I'd appreciate that. Or just send me an email.
He did tell me it was 25 at that time, is what he told me, so.
Roger, did you want to make any announcement about the judge?
Go ahead.
Well, I can do it. It doesn't matter. Judge Ransstrom has been, he's been appointed, or at least received notice from the governor that he, they're gonna call him up to the district court. That still has to be approved by the Senate, so it hasn't been finalized. But we will be looking for a new justice court judge here, probably fairly soon, so.
What does that mean for the drug court?
That's a good question. We always go through that when we hire, and part of the interviewing process when we do that, we bring that up and discuss that heavily with them. Because, you know, Mayor Burrows was always really strongly supportive of that, as is Mayor Searle, and so that's kind of one of the conditions that we expect him to do that. In lieu, how they do that, they get paid on the number of cases that they handle, and that's determined by the state. So what we will do in this case is, we will be within that range, probably I would drop back down to where the starting salary would be in that range, and then add in an additional amount that would help compensate them for the drug, because it's not factored in by the state as part of their compensation. So we, that will be a number one priority for us.
Okay, thanks, Steve, for that, that update. He's done a lot of good things. It'll be tough to see him leave. Any other discretionary, Mr. Mitchell?
I did have one thing. I was out of town recently, and, you know, we have a lot of technology nowadays, and I had one piece of my technology malfunction, had a false alarm at my house. But another piece of technology I just happened to have service during that time, and I got to see a couple of chief frankman's officers come to my house. I could see them stand on my front porch, ringing the doorbell, and kind of wondering what was going on. And then my neighbor told me they checked around the whole house and made sure everything was secure. And so just appreciate our police officers, you know, the good job that they do. And luckily, it was just a false alarm, a motion sensor.
I thought you were gonna say you were watching the meeting.
I do that after. I do that after, because I can't see what you guys are doing until I go watch it again. So, but anyway, pass that on. Thanks for stopping by and making sure everything was okay. And I appreciate that, so.
Hey, where were you at when you were watching all this?
Uh, let's see, I was on a boat in a port in, in a tropical location.
Just wondering, just curious.
It was a long ways away.
For the record. Okay, anything else? We good, Mr. Arnold?
You have one thing, I mean, I don't know if you have seen Facebook, but there was a comment about the water break, water line break. And so I commented about how good our public works department handled that, and kind of went after a guy a little bit because he was thinking that the city should provide water if, if there's a break. So maybe if we take a look at our emergency preparedness plan to put it out, because if they're out of water for six hours or something like that, some, some people are waiting for the water truck to show up and deliver cases of water.
Yeah, it kind of sounded like I read his comment.
It was like an hour. That was just eating at me, and I thought, I'm calling the trigger on this one.
One thing, one thing, counsel, that made that line so difficult is its size. It was a 12-inch line, and we just don't keep a lot of 12-inch parts around, but they, but they found a crack in it. And so rather than just putting a wrap around it and being done, they had to cut out a whole segment and reinstall it. So that takes time. It was a tough break. But I appreciate the public works staff for getting out there. They did a great job on getting it done.
They did post that on the city Facebook site, too, so they did let people know that there was a problem.
On the Facebook post, it said the city should notify, and then somebody, it was actually his ex-wife. You mean this one? I wondered. It was pretty funny.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
He has a sixth sense of humor, I guess.
Any other things? I've got just one, one item I'll, I'll mention. I think council's all aware that the Chevron Station has been sold, and it's, it's going to be demolished and taken down. In our planning commission meeting the other night, it was actually made known that there will be a Starbucks as one of the businesses in there. There could be two or three, I think even four businesses at that location. But it is public information that, that's a Starbucks, so just letting you know that. So you're aware of that if people ask what's going on, so. You have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks for being here.
I was the Bahamas.
Oh my gosh, it was so warm and nice.
Be nice.